There you go.
Right there. Alicia, can you hear us? Yep. Will you hear you?
No, I can't. I couldn't see or hear you earlier.
Yeah, we got it.
And I can barely hear you. I can hear that there's noise, but I can't hear you directly. It's like watching Charlie Brown's mom talk.
Is that any better?
Barely. I can hear you.
So she can hear you.
Okay.
They just got to speak clearly and loudly, I guess. Okay. So, all right, we've got a couple of minutes before seven oh five. We're going to do a P and R. You hear the public agenda here for White Devolton, just on Smith Road.
What do you think of the twenty watts?
We're looking at three, five watts. Yes, this was your previously approved with special permit. And you were filed with the registry of genes. I just want to get that all even out done on it and then signed by the planning board so that the.
Are you?
But no.
The planning board's group is reasonable January, December. The state plan is now they're doing A and I for the lungs. They already have special permit for.
Okay.
So they can be filed.
So you don't need to worry.
When it's assigned.
Good, how are you?
Sarah, mute yourself.
You know I did.
Oh, thank you. Wasn't there another one? Did they rescind that one?
No, they, they're, they're allowed. I checked with David, they're allowed to file them both. However, if they ever want to go build the house, they have to pick one.
Okay. So they're both going to be on trial.
Yeah, they're going to be both be on file, but you know, for them to get a building, to build the house, they have to send one of these plans. I think they're trying to keep their options open on how they sell the property. Yeah, it might be easier.
Some.
Yeah, that's probably easier.
Yeah.
So what I have to do is. One.
South.
That's right.
Oh, we have a motion to approve. I thought we already approved it. We have a motion to approve the five lots we create on Smith Road for White Devolton.
So.
Second act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me? My name's Jeff Stefanic. I'm the lance there on that plan. I just wanted to be clear that I can pick up the Mylar when tomorrow or this week sometime.
Pick it up after seven thirty tomorrow morning is ready.
Okay.
We are closed.
Okay. All right. Okay. I don't know if it's just me, but the audio is very, very sketchy and it sounds like you guys are underwater, but I understand. I'll, I'll pick up the Mylar. I want to thank y'all for taking care of that so early in the meeting. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right. It being seven oh six seven. I'm going to public hearing. The Barton Center for Diabetes Education, Inc., Plan, Justice, Facility, Site Plan Modification, one fifty Richardson's Corner, very the points for section two hundred dash three point two, two hundred dash seven point one D, two hundred dash seven point two. Of the child things only by law, the child and plan board will hold them a remote public hearing on Wednesday, February first, seven oh five. Being by Zoom meeting ID number two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, and in person. Meeting at thirty seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass., O one five oh seven, on request of the Barton Center for Diabetes Education, thirty, and its road. Oxford, Mass., O one five, three seven, for site plan modification, application for the removal of seven existing cabins. Place them in three new forty foot by sixty foot new cabins. The proposed new cabins will have a total increase of nine hundred square feet. Increase in building area at one fifty Richardson's Corner Road along the site plan improvements. The property contains approximately one hundred thirty plus or minus acres. The proposed new cabins will have the ability for year round use. The property is located at one fifty Richardson's Corner Road, and my property ID is assessing map. Fifty four block A lots four and eleven, and a zone agricultural. This meeting of the Charlotte Plan Board will be conducted in person and by remote participation, specific information in the general guideline for remote participation by members of the public in our parties. With a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Charlotte website at www.townofcharlotte.net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch this meeting may do so on the phone or video participation. HTTPS, home backslash backslash zoom dot U R S backslash two one one, two nine three, two two five seven. Meeting ID two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, phone access one six four six five five, eight six five six. Talk to the site plan application are available for inspection at the plan board office and the town parks office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website under planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the place, time and place designated. All right, just a point of clarification. The applicant's engineer is the planning board's peer review engineer. So for this week, the planning board has hired a correctional to do the peer review. So there's no conflict of interest. I just want to make that clear from the start. So the applicant's engineer will give a presentation. The board will have questions. Then at that point, after all that, we will open it up to the public. Let's start with the applicant's.
Thank you. I don't know, maybe put this here that way the board and the audience can see it. So thank you for the record, Mike Adrian, great engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Barton Center and Camp Jolly, some of the representatives of which are here as well. So as mentioned in the hearing notice, this is a modification to two thousand and four site plan approval. Just to back up before I get to this project, that plan, that's like plan approval was for construction of the penthouse, which is their main dining hall facility. My arm doesn't get away. Right here. That was constructed. That project was also included. Several new cabins along the waterfront replace old cabins. That work was not done. So this project modifies that build out plan a bit in that the existing cabins are here. The seven cabins are red on the waterfront. Those will be renewed and replaced with renewed more modern cabins. These cabins will have restrooms, eat, fire protection. And in addition, we're adding a small addition of an existing cabin that'll be converted from what was a staff lounge to a camper cabin as well. Overall, this project increases the bed count by about twenty six on the site, so we can have a few more campers. Part of the project involves a new septic system. This not only serves these renewed cabins, but also several existing ones where they have old and failing systems. So that's this large square at the center of the site that kind of sits on their activity field already now. We have designed handicapped accessibility to these renewed cabins and the renovated cabins from a central handicap parking area here. So from that point, anyone that's handicapped accessible or need handicapped needy can access the renewed cabins and access the dining hall with an already handicapped accessible in the new building here. We've had discussions with the State Architectural Access Board about what percentage of what buildings on the site need to be accessible because it's existing facility. I understand you may have it in front of you. The building inspector has some follow up questions on that. He requested a meeting. We'll do that with him next week to go over his remaining questions, but we feel at this point we are in compliance with handicapped accessibility requirements for this site. We are adding, as I mentioned, fire protection to these buildings, and that is piggybacked off an existing system. That's in the penthouse. There's a large water storage tank there that supplies the site. So basically just running a feeder line from that new building out to these three. Other than that, there's very little of the site work. The septic system is the kind of main component of it with the buildings and slurry around. And there's been a lot of discussion, I understand, but what the use is, the use is still a camp, resident camp, which is day programs, overnight programs. It's going to remain that, even though buildings are potentially for year round, they do have bathrooms, so we need to give them heat and fire protections requirement of the building code now. So there is no change in use, still the same use. And allowing it to moderately expand how many hectares you can house now. If you're not familiar with, with, with the partner center does. They have diabetes education programs for boys at this site, maybe six to sixteen. Teach them how to manage and cope and live with their diabetes. So they're one of the foremost organizations in the state for doing those programs. So that's a summary of the project overall. I can certainly go into more detail on any particulars of the product or any questions the board may have. As I mentioned, we do plan a meeting for next week to go over his questions he had today. There've been two peer reviews from McCorr that we responded to. Most recently, we responded yesterday with some follow ups to more report. Revisions, site plan was not revised a second time. So we'll wait for them to come back with their review on that, and I expect they'll probably have that next week or so. So at this point, I'll take any questions.
Andrew, the chair. So where's the, did you say there's a staff cabin in there?
This building here used to be called the staff lounge, where some of like the counselors would hang out during the day. That's being converted into a bunkhouse for campers now.
And it wasn't the bunkhouse for staff previously, it's just a staff lounge?
It was called, yeah, I don't know if it was ever any.
Off it on it has been used.
For housing of staff. And so converted means insulated, tied into the septic system, fire suppression, heating, air conditioning.
Correct.
All of them.
Yes.
Into that same septic system.
Actually, this, this building and some of these on this other side of the site flow to a septic system behind it and field.
And the new cabins are fully insulated, heating, air conditioning. Yes, what's the system? What, what, what system do you propose for heating and air conditioning? What's the fuel energy?
They are. Solar. Propane, propane for the heat. Or then a air conditioner. Just, just. You know, everything where you mentioned. And, yeah, but the, the heating units will be fueled by propane tanks, which are, some of these existing buildings are already kind of war season. They're fueled the same way. Propane tank.
No solar. Is there any solar in the camp at all? So there's utility lines and pools already to these, or that's included in the?
We have to run new underground electric, there's an going to be an electrical plan as part of the building permit ceremony. We're building permit set to run electric to these buildings. From kind of the mean of, which is a laboratory building here, that's what electrically comes into sight and branches off from there. So they will need to be type of the ones.
And the existing cabins, did you say they, they don't have septic?
I actually had photos to bring with me. I just can't put it up on the screen, but they're just shells, no insulation, no, this, maybe a light in each one. But there's no, there's no, there's no septic, no water service in those.
So that's all new utilities for these new cabins.
Yes.
So that's a substantial amount of work and investment in the property that add in these cabins.
Certainly.
And how much does it raise the occupants?
Over the twenty six beds, so plus twenty six. So I think total, in total, from like one eighty one to twelve seven. Right, maximum capacity.
So did you say that like these new cabins are going to be getting accessible? What about the existing?
So I know that was a question that the building inspector had. If we had to make the entire site accessible. We feel because of the way the, the other discussion with the state board is they consider us a transient lodging facility. It's only a certain percentage of the buildings have to be accessible, and we made a new ones accessible are. At least the penthouse is currently accessible. We're going to take that discussion a bit further with them and make sure we're, we're fully in compliance. The only question we have is the infirmary, which is where kids go to, we'll see if they have a health issue. That's not accessible at the moment. So we anticipate that may need to be made accessible, just for the extension of a walkway and a ramp on the outside. But we don't feel the existing cabins, you have the other buildings and cabins do not need to be made accessible. And the, the new walkways extend to all the new buildings and connect everything together or? From, from the handicap parking, which is centrally located here.
Yep.
Down to each of the new buildings, and that's all compliant, less than five percent. So it's just a walkway, it's not a ramp. And then also to the, from that same spot to the penthouse and then easy chain over to the renovating cabin. And that's all but two. Relative, it's all less than five.
How much of what your proposal has been done already?
The existing cabins have been demoed, the septic system. A portion of the septic system work has started, the tankage. Obviously, because of the time of the year, we don't want to open up this big hole in the ground, do that kind of work. We're going to get buried in snow. So that will be, that will proceed in the spring. We have our permits from board health to do that for conservation for our work within the bunker zone. Other than that, we can't get building permits until we get through this process for buildings. The hope is to at least get one of these done prior to when camp opens in June. June. Obviously, with the COVID and all that, they've been shut down for I think two years now, with no, no people on the site. We're hoping to get back to somewhat normal operation and having just one of these cabins or maybe more done for the summer. That's like a stretch at this point, we're almost in February now. Would it help, would help that effort?
They said some of the, the buildings have been demoed already?
These existing cabins have been demoed, yes.
So they know what one was done recently?
That was done in the last month or two.
Okay.
John, you have anything? I just go back to the original.
Yeah.
Ruling, it says in accordance with the reserve by law. Approval will be valid for two years only. All work proposed in the site form is required by above conditions must be completed within two years from the date of approval. So that would be April twenty first, two thousand and six. So just was wondering what your procedure was when not being a part of the planning board and seeing the original plans that were approved. How much are you modifying this for? You, what was the original plan?
So I, I've seen what the planning board has on file. I, I was not the engineer for that project. Those, they weren't even the owners, our center did not own that facility at that point. So it's a different ownership team, different engineer. The plans that I saw was, I think, one or two sheets that just basically had a footprint of the dining hall and where these new buildings are going to be and nothing else. So as far as the buildings are concerned, that's a change. It was four, five or six smaller cabins here. We've consolidated three larger cabins. Again, as mentioned in the board hearing, it's only a nine inch square foot increase in building area. That we're proposing. The septic system is new component. That's necessary because a lot of the existing systems are failing and need attention. Other than that, the project is similar in that respect. Again, the dining hall was a big component back then. That's already done. That was completed. That's these outdoor cabins, these camper cabins are a change.
Mike, what's the separation between the two new buildings that are going? Right there.
Those, I think we've got it about.
Twenty feet or something? The only reason why I ask is because section two hundred dash three point three, number C, number one. Is when you have two more construction direct on the same lot, the minimum distance between such structure shall be the height of the higher building. So based upon the plan submitted. The building's what, thirty three? Feet tall? Did you need thirty three feet of these separation between the two, if I'm reading that by law correctly?
That's a good question.
Okay.
I know that Kurt looked at the plans, not the official managers. He hasn't got building permit, but he's
Okay.
Seen the plans and had to pay that comment plus.
All right. Just want to think about it, I think, for, for us to balance it off him.
Yeah, I mean, we plan to meet with them next week, follow up and see if they.
Only because, I mean, if, I mean, if you got to move them, it's falls under this, this board. And then is the, the sidewalk, is it going to be a gravel stone dust or is it going to be paved?
Stone dust.
Okay, gotcha. And now just stone dust. I mean, they do them with the, the state parks, so it's a
Still ADA.
Still ADA, legitimate.
Compatable.
Yeah. And then I'm not familiar with, I mean, is it, when you pull it off of Richardson's corner, is it a, does it loop all the way back out onto Richardson's corner again, or is there a turnaround?
Yeah. Again, I had a plan that had to overview this site, but there's, there's one entrance in.
Yeah.
It's a long kind of looping driveway in.
Yep.
And the park, main parking lot is down here behind the dining hall. This is a basketball court.
Okay.
So people park, turn around and exit that way. It's always driveway. And that's what I pay parking lot, right? That's just the.
They do not receive any comments.
Yeah, they come by the apartment. They, they receive the plan, right? Yeah, okay, all right.
It, it is a pretty, pretty good sized lot.
Yeah, I just, just think about accessible. If there's, there's an issue with, no. You get a call or something.
So there is a, there is kind of a maintenance access group?
Oh, yeah.
That looks the parking lot all the way down.
Yeah, so they can get down there.
Too, yeah, so they can't pull access through the side.
Are there any new roads being constructed? And you're not covering over any existing ones?
No.
The additional exterior lighting added or the buildings or the properties?
There'll be some wall packing units on the, on the, on the buildings above the entrances, both in the front and the back. These have walkouts at the back. We're not looking at any site lighting poles anymore, so it's just going to be the LED lights on front and back of those.
And what's the use for the basement of these, these buildings?
Basement's storage bay or is basement? All the, all the, the living space is on the first floor.
Be the fire protection for these buildings. Fire up on the pond, there's a system or?
There, so they're, they're all going to be sprinkler. I mentioned earlier that the dining hall has a large fire protection system that's oversized for, for the building itself. It's been evaluated, it can handle additional flow. And we're basically going to run a line out of that system, tie into these three buildings and the renovated building. Feed that sprinkler system.
So basically, the building C is an apartment. Is that going to be staff housing or is that also?
Building, building demon?
Yes. The, the building C, is what it says.
A, B, and C are these three cabins. These are all identical. The first floor is bunkhouse for campers. The lower floor is storage.
Okay.
The renovated cabin at the first floor is bunkhouse for campers. The lower level is sort of an apartment for the seasonal doctor that stays there during camp season.
Anyone else from the board have any questions? Good for you now?
Right now, yeah.
Good right now.
Okay. All right, at this point in time, I'd love to open the public here and open for public questions. If you have a question, state your name and your address. If you're on Zoom, please just make the screen, turn your camera on, please, just so we can see you talking. And please keep your questions just to the site plan. That's all we can talk about. It's all about what they presented and that's it. I'm just going to live there and then I'll just spot these buildings going up. All right. Go right ahead. Gentlemen in the back.
Peter Mallett, twenty nine off the road in town. He said, open up in June for normal procedure. What's, what's, when, when do you close? What's normal procedure out from June to what?
So through the chair, I'll.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'll put it in.
Sorry, I took the look. I apologize. Go right ahead.
June through the second week in August.
Second week of August.
Okay. Oh, wow.
So this is summer season.
Correct.
Ten weeks out of the year. Do, do you think? Off season.
Correct. One day. That's off season.
Yeah.
Are you still affiliated with George Lynn Diabetic Foundation?
No, we are not. We purchased the camp in two thousand and ten.
Me, you. Me and who?
The Barton Center.
Barton Foundation. So Barton Foundation owns the camp.
Correct.
It's Barton Foundation. Will there be anything to do with diabetic? Is this still a nonprofit organization?
You guys stick to the site plan, please.
Oh, is it the site plan?
This is the building. The buildings.
I think they're happy to answer that. It is a nonprofit, nonprofit organization.
All right.
Diabetes camp. That is not going to change.
We are a summer camp.
Yeah.
We do have programs for children with type one diabetes throughout the summer.
Okay. Any other questions?
Peter Stackers.
Yep.
I live at one forty seven, which has been a lot of.
I live at one forty-seven, which is down the road. I have a couple of questions. Um, as the fire department review these plans. Um, the question I have is where their leach field is going? Can that support the weight of a fire truck and an ambulance? Uh, driving over the leach field?
All right, so wait for comment back from the fire department, they have received.
They did receive the copy of the plans, they made no comments on the plans.
As of yet.
As of yet, yeah. Um, is my understanding that the board at this moment has drawings of the proposed cabins?
Yes, correct.
When did those drawings become available for our public?
It was timestamped January twenty-sixth.
January twenty-sixth?
Yep, was the timestamp.
Um. Not, not aware that some plans have been drawn up already. Their proposal. Their conservation committee and the proposal, the planning board shows a forty by sixty cabin. Could you give me a brief overlay of what this cabin consists of? Doc, can you see the plan?
Oh, please. Um, was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Nine bunks and a single bed?
This is a full-size copy of the architectural plans that we should maybe, anybody that has to look at them.
So through the chair, go right ahead, Don, Peter, it's, it's a, it's a pretty open floor plan. Um, where the big room area is probably thirty by thirty, wide area. Um, and off of the other section, there's a three-stall bathroom with two-stall shower. Um, couple of, uh, janitorial closets and a handicap accessible bathroom with a stairway that goes into the basement.
Cause I was, the plan that was submitted. All aboard, it shows a, it just has a forty by sixty building with twenty-two beds, so.
The interior of the building is thirty, they didn't afford John. The length of the building.
Uh, the, the porch is a little bit bigger, so it's a forty by forty, sorry, it's a forty by forty area, approximately. Uh, is, is the main cabin area.
But there won't be twenty-two beds to that cabin.
There is twenty-two beds in that, in that well.
Single bed. So there's nine bunks.
Yep.
One single bed, that's nineteen. Right?
And, and that's gonna fit within that, um.
Yep, initial bed separation on it.
Have, um. Have you gotten any feedback from the board of health as far as, uh, plans for a building?
They received a copy of the plan, the building did not submit any report on. Um, plans and buildings, they haven't received the copy.
So basically, the floor plans have been submitted, but nobody's really had a chance to review them.
No, no comment has been issued. Actually. Well, this is from, um, James, James Purver, June, January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll read the letter, uh, Camp Joss has been permitted as a camp on the Child Board of Health for many years and is considered a children's specialty camp to fight one diabetics. I believe the camp is one of the very best one camps in Massachusetts and is needed for children to be properly cared for during their days away from family in the camp. I fully support the addition of new cabins to replace the pre-World War II structures after you remove the plans, it states it's gonna be twenty-two beds in each cabin, no real narrative on the size of the building. Both must comply with one oh five C mark or ten or seventy. So he has not, he made any comment on the newly submitted, you know, the plan, plans.
Through the chair.
Go right ahead, John.
To Gene's point, says twenty-two beds.
Correct, max.
Yeah, max, okay.
Max.
The, the plan show, does not show that. The children's.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, correct, so they, they're gonna have the option to put a couple more there.
Yeah, Kurt, they gotta meet the requirement.
They're only showing nineteen on the plan, but the note says twenty-two.
Yeah, if I may.
They're not showing where the other ones go.
There's a loft in these buildings too, where they're getting the counters, there's a couple of extra beds up in the loft.
Yep.
Each, each of the cabins has exactly twenty-two beds.
Yep, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions?
During the week. Um, come look at the plans. We're, we're looking at a two-story building now. They have a loft home.
Well, how to classify that as building terms for the loft? That's, it's in that second story.
That's your second story.
Okay.
I just have a question for the building commissioner on that. The, um. It, it seems. A lot of the plans have been reworked and reworked and reworked. The conservation board had a public hearing. Um, and about four months later, they amended their conservation plan. Um, one of the three cabins got relocated behind the director's cabin. Um. Assuming. That that third cabin fits behind there, I have my doubts. Um. Cause I'm using the original plan that was done by Graves Engineering. And doesn't seem to have enough space for a forty by sixty zone back there, behind the former camp director cabin. Um. Again, tonight, at the last minute, they presented you with a floor plan for the building, for the buildings. Um, it, there's just, a lot of the ducks are not in the correct row. They keep changing their plan halfway through the project. I did go to a conservation hearing. Um. I asked them, I said, are you aware of the fifth cabin being moved to where it's moved to? And they go, yeah. But, you know, shouldn't that have been another hearing? They kind of paused for a few minutes. And they said, yeah, that probably should have had another here, because it is a major site plan adjustment. Graves Engineering did submit. A request from the board. It says, the changes are minor and involve relocation of proposed cabin and septic system design. All work is still only in the buffer zone. If you look at the first public hearing of the conservation board, it's not in the buffer zone where the third cabin got moved to. It's not, it's a major. Change in the first plan, there should have been another public hearing asking, put that other cabin where it is. And, and one of my questions tonight was gonna be, have any of the plans shown or approved by the building department, electrical department, and the plumbing department of the town? Now I'm being told tonight that a set of plans have been submitted and have not been reviewed by any of the departments. Does that kind of put a horse behind the car? I'm not gonna say put the car behind the horse, sorry.
Typically, no building planning is submitted to any department prior to a planning board meeting. And we, that isn't the normal procedure, not done until after a planning board approved by the planning board. If it has to be built, it does not, then. They would have to amend it, and why is it coming back to the planning board desperately?
So. Tonight, you guys, the, the board is going by the set of drawings that were just received. And. After they're approved by the different departments, you vote on it again?
No, cause usually, uh, I could be on a building permit submitted, wasn't it, where the other, where the, we submit your package to the building department, the building inspector, it's a, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector. It's a plan, we're just looking at the site plan, we're starting to get situated, accessibility, and parking and stuff like that, and lighting if applicable. So, um, I, I mean, I guess from the board's point of view, if I'm wrong, anyone on the board, we just care about the footprint. And then if they, then we get input from other boards, as long as it needs to require me as far as like, like this, which is kind of a unique situation, being in a camp, get the bedding situation and, and stuff like that. So, um. I guess, and then whole building heights we look at as well too, so, um.
Oh, I don't see this getting approved tonight.
No, there's still some, we're still waiting to hear back. Yeah, we're looking for more information, they need, they need more information, so, um, still do some additional peer review, yeah.
Um, I have another question, in regards to, um, cabin seven and eight that is still on the property. Yep, if a camper kid is coming to camp, he gets a brand-new cabin. And the other kid gets the old cabin. Is, is the intent of building the new cabins and taking seven and eight out after they're built? And I guess, through the chair, if you could ask that question of the Barton Center, I'd appreciate it.
Sorry, plan, whatever you guys have already, cause I know the guys have already started and done with the buildings that you have, they're highlighted in orange, are there any other?
I have to refresh myself, we're seven and eight.
What if I, the, 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 Mike?
So, that's not on the plan now?
Yeah.
Um, would they like to renovate every cabin? Yeah, but they can't do that.
Yeah, I guess, I think the question, the fire is more or less, after you get off that cabin C. We end up tearing down seven and eight.
It's not in the plan right now?
Yeah, correct.
Not what was at this time, correct?
If, if cabin seven and eight were to be demoed in years to come, that's something that comes with the planning board?
That's sure.
Type plan change?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's just the demolition, they're not doing anything.
It's only the plan to replace them.
Okay.
So.
Yep. So. Go right ahead.
Yeah, you're talking about conservation, and I know you've got a lot of water down there, I'm sure they're taking out the EDP permits and everything, I think.
I. I'm on a, that's a, that's conservation, I'm unaware of where they sit with that.
I don't see any EDP signs, I know that people get them, they actually sign them.
Yeah, correct, yeah, I hate to say, you have to check with the conservation.
I'm sure they're within a hundred feet of the water.
Yeah. You might have to check with, check with conservation, they better know as far as where they are along the process, but that, I'm, I'm not up to speed on that.
And every time something gets changed, with your EDP permit, it has to be resubmitted.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
To this department, that department.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
If I can just say, I don't like to hear falsehoods be put out there.
Yes.
We, uh, there hasn't been that many plan changes, I'll explain the process, and I know this is not your main, it's a planning board, but just everyone understands. We did go back to the non-coming second time because we had to relocate one building.
Yep.
That was a result of an issue with the, the zone one, there's a lot of war sites, like, the zone one had to be enlarged. Um, that building had to be relocated, we did go back to conservation and they approved those plans, we have a valid permit with them. They've, uh, come out to the site, I'm sure inspected, the several roof controls are in place, but that, that, that's a bulk, that's a bulk for everything being done there. Um, um, Board of Health as well, the, the plans have been approved and they're conducting inspections as necessary, so I just wanted to straighten, straighten that out.
Okay, thank you for clarification, are there any other questions from the board, or an answer?
Yeah, Jim, should I, forty-nine offensive road?
Yep.
How far along have you already gotten on the, um, septic system there?
So through the chair, as I explained, we've got the tanks in the ground and that's it.
And which with all the excavators running over there day in, day out?
Working every day, taking loads and loads of dirt.
They're out there all day, every day.
Out there cutting wood and I can see them and they have them.
I can too.
There's dump trucks and there's excavators running constantly all day long, every day.
You have a clear sight for that property, we can see everything.
I mean, it's pretty live septic system, isn't it?
We're cooperating under the.
Yeah.
Excuse me, we're, we're operating under the proof plan for the septic system destruction, that construction is still ongoing, yeah, excuse me.
Through the water health, right?
Through the water health, the tanks are still being installed, backfilled, so there, there is, it is an active construction site, full of septic system.
And there's piping from tank to tank.
Correct.
Correct.
So, the nuts been approved by the, for, for the health.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions?
I, I, go right ahead, I guess my last question is basically, um. Project's been started.
Correct.
They feel very comfortable that. Whatever board they have to go before. They're gonna, they don't even have to go before they just stop the work. I mean, you, you've already got the cabins cleared, the site's been de-stunk, demolition is a bit issue. And the planning board hasn't even approved the site plan. I think it's showing a little disrespectful to the planning board that they've started the project. Without the planning board asking questions about the project, I think they're being very disrespectful to the planning board. At this time.
Give me your brothers.
Because we're not known of planning.
Yep.
They do have an active permit for the septic, correct, for the board of health?
Yes, they do.
And they were issued the. Kurt has issued the, uh, demo permits and.
This reschedule meeting that we just had today.
Yes.
We got a registered letter about the one, but how come we didn't get, didn't we have gotten all registered letters again?
I don't know. We announced that we needed, for the meeting with you all tonight.
Yeah, at that meeting, we announced that it was gonna be postponed to February first.
And, and that, so.
You don't, if, by, the work by the letter of the law and if the meeting gets continued or. A public hearing gets continued, don't have to re send out a notification, it's just the initial. Notification from the first meeting, yes.
Well, if we weren't know the enough to come up and poke around, we wouldn't, you know, the people that weren't at that meeting.
What, the original meeting?
The original meeting was canceled before it was started.
Twelve.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, during our meeting, we did say. During our meeting, we did state that it was gonna be postponed for seven oh five on February first.
The other thing I heard is postponed to a later date.
Did you, I heard, how did you hear that? Yeah, how'd you hear that?
Um, you know that on the planning board on Facebook.
So I think on the planning board, it, it was also announced the very next day that, uh, the date was set.
I literally just had to start following the planning board on Facebook, you see it, like, three days ago.
How quick, usually I'm used to put up on YouTube or Zoom or whatever, on YouTube, by the, by the chat and, uh. Yeah.
I think they knew not, and they were downstairs, we, of course, upstairs, and we'll ease away to answers.
All right, are there any other questions from the public?
I have one more.
Go right ahead, Peter, I'll be at.
Yep. They, the business center was sent a letter from Tom Petrie in twenty twenty-one.
Yep, March of twenty twenty-one.
From the planning board stating, we wish. From the planning board stating, we wish to continue with this stuff, we need to pull demolition permits and all this stuff. Showing no respect again for the building department. They demoed buildings without a permit. In the process of removing the trees, demos were done.
Yep.
Again, that is showing no respect for the town officials. They were officially notified that this had to be done, and they disregarded those letters. From what I'm seeing happening here tonight, they beg for forgiveness instead of asking for permission to do something. And I hope this is kept in the mind of the people that volunteer their time to do this stuff, conservation board, planning board, they volunteer their time. And they're not getting the respect that they should get. I can't wait to have the next.
Okay.
I got one more question.
Go ahead, sir.
Do they have permits, um, issued already, cleared a lot so much?
You don't need a permit to clear a lot, only if, if you're going to be working in the buffer zone, that, if you're working in the buffer zone, you need permission from conservation, and they already have gone through conservation, one to the other.
Just been trees dropped left and right over there.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you don't, if, if you're outside the buffer, you can cut whatever tree you want.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And then I went to the conservation hearing.
Yep.
I said to the board members, um, they're already in there, clearing the trees and stuff.
Yep.
Everybody looked at each other and went, we were never notified that work had started. Again, disrespect for the conservation board. Thank you.
No problem. Go ahead, sir.
I have a question.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, David Brennan, one fifty-one, Petrie Boulevard, yeah. So, I'm understanding that this is a summer camp, is that correct?
Correct, according to the applicant.
Okay, um, and the facilities that are going in are year-round cabins?
That's the game plan, correct?
Okay. Something goes out there, but that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't think the permitted use has changed at all.
Okay.
We can't say what's going to happen.
You're saying.
Right, I understand. Size expression, you gotta keep it heated in the winter. New rules, you have to, you know, with this size expression, that it can't have, so, that's the only reason why they need it and they. You know what I mean?
Yeah. The dry system or wet system?
Wet system, I believe.
So, no, not going to be any, uh, people camping over there in the wintertime?
And that's, that's a border health thing, because they, they're the ones that issued a permit.
It's usually, uh, camps end around.
Yep, she did.
The end of October.
Yeah, I think that when you stayed, what, second of August, second of August, or early?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, no one else has any questions from the, I'll go ahead, sir.
Yeah, John Walker, thirty, Bush and Drive.
Yep.
Uh, I'm one of the others.
Yep.
And, uh, one thing I don't get is, uh, in the original letter that I will see, it said something in there, you can probably clarify this, and it, it was a, it was housing there, uh, emergency homeless people, what was that all about? I don't understand that.
That wasn't even a public hearing. Notice that I read. That wasn't, that was not, was not.
I got a letter that I received.
Uh, that was, that was on, that was on.
Yeah, it was different now. Yeah. Who was, who was the letter from?
Letter from?
I don't remember, I don't, I didn't read it again.
And I didn't receive the same one, I, the same day, I don't remember when we.
Okay, did, did that come from the town of Charleston or did it come from?
No.
It's the center of the others, and I'm the other in Charleston, I'm not the other in Oxford, so why would Oxford be set?
They will be.
I don't understand, so, that kind of threw a curve at it, got me really concerned because I am an other, and I want this family, I give this, uh, helping pull my family so we can enjoy it. And, you know, the emergency homeless people kind, was wondering a little bit about that.
This was a registered letter?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
It didn't have a return address or?
Can't tell the trouble.
I don't remember what a name that came from.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great, oh, drop it off, bring it to the office when they do, we get time, I appreciate it. Did you have another question, sir?
You know, the, the word cabin has been, is quite frequent. What's the definition of a cabin, a summer cabin?
That'd be one of the buildings, wouldn't it?
It's, you know, sleep twenty-two, that's not a cab, it's taking away the summer atmosphere camp, right, you know, when you send your kids to a summer camp round, when they stay in all little separate ones, and they have a campfire every Saturday night, and bees on Saturday, you know, a lot of these, it's just nothing. Twenty-two people, the, would you want to go camping with twenty-two people, or they have a summer outing?
I could understand if you had a lot of small kids. Um, yeah, that you'd want to keep them together, if people, they're under watch.
Okay.
Go ahead, John, who we asked, the people with the job, with campfires.
Go right ahead.
Why do you propose a, a new type of housing there at site? Why is that a more of a larger footprint than the traditional cabin that has?
Down the window.
These cabins would be similar, almost identical to the cabins we have at the girls' camp. It's not just about camping, we have nurses, we have medical staff that go in and out, that they learn from each other, so that it's more of a community, it's not a traditional overnight camp, as was mentioned, you know, by our, and I guess they get that, but they also get education and they, they learn from each other. So, if we had our way, we put fifty kids in a cabin, because they learn so much from each other. So, that is why, and part of it is staff. You have to have staff that live in that cabin, and that's where the locks came in. Both staff are upstairs, so that they see and hear everything, and hear if the town goes low at night, they hear if they go high, they hear the alarms on their pumps, and they can address the medical need as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. All right.
I don't think that really answered why, why they have to be in the winter, why are they winterized? Oh, I didn't know that was hard, but I'm kind of expanding the footprint, I'm sorry.
Maybe you should ask that question.
The tech question was going to be, it is, they need, because it's a hard special, so I need to be active year-round, I need to heat the space to, to make sure things won't freeze.
Um, and this doesn't really have too much to, are the nurses, you have a lot of nurses on staff?
Yes.
Okay, are they in each individual cabin, or do the kids have to go to the nurses?
Both, depending on the cabin, so some of our cabins do have healthcare staff, some of them are student nurses that are living in cabins. Okay, the nurses are always in the infirmary, as well as the endocrinologists and the doctors. Okay.
All right, Mike, what are you guys going to, thinking of the test that, for the, in the spring, or next couple of weeks when it warms up?
For the, uh, underground?
Yeah, as soon as we're able to do that.
Got you, okay. Obviously, we can make changes, we'll come back.
Yeah. So, that, I just saw one of the reports. But, all right. We have a motion to continue the public hearing to February fifteenth.
Is that enough time? There's going to be enough time for them, you know?
Are we fifteen for it for you?
Let's do that for now, we, we know we have to meet the current over.
I have, I have just one more question. How much land is cleared up there now, or how much construction clearing is, is going on with?
David, there's the limits that are showing the plans for, um, the septic floor, the future cabins.
Okay. Is it over an acre or is it under an acre else?
Good.
All right, we have a motion to continue the public hearing on February fifteenth at seven oh five.
We make it seven P M.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the Camp Jocelyn until February fifteenth at seven five P M. Pardon, Ken. Uh, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, aye.
Aye. All right, thank you guys. Good night. All right, next up, we have a big deal public. Here. All right. It's one with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one, seeing the public subdivision regulation going by, now they want a whole other hearing on Wednesday, Thursday first, twenty twenty-three, seventy ten, here, the twenty-one, this time on here, Thursday, not zoom, room meeting ID, two one one, two nine three, two two five seven.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven Main Street, Charlemagne, from the application, he, he, the company, you know, seems that he's supposed to be the master man. All one six, the subdivision of four, which we struck a free lock subdivision of four away at three forty-five. Mr. Rowan, one of the property pretenders, we put it on the front of his name, here's the property goaded, that one is that, it's a road. Wanting to properly assess that, concerned about they possibly go in the zone, this is tent that fries, far, as a cultural. Options the site plan application available for instruction to the home board office, and the town board, something to do with hours, and the president, certain of which he did. We'll be able to attend the meeting person at the time, and they designate for, or by a Zoom meeting, meeting at number two oh one, two nine three, two two five seven. How's it going?
Good evening, through the Shepherd's, we already, didn't we do with subdivision plan for that, and can we reset the data?
Yes, uh, because what had happened is there is, we saw that building being in the piece of, uh, yeah, it was sent to the application, we'd already closed the area.
Do we need to vote on that, or did we vote on that when we said, or, they don't?
No, we didn't vote in their last meeting, okay, there, and then they had green notice, that's why we, okay, tonight, our new subdivision plan revised to resolve and setback.
Okay, that's right.
Correct. Bye, uh, Tom Corbett, CP Battery Devco, um, this is the same plan that came in front of you before, the setback, um, line has been adjusted off of that overhead, um, like I say, overhead, that's a lean-to, um, so that setback line has been adjusted, and, um, it means a setback, it's moved a couple property lines essentially, um, so that was the only thing that was um, addressed on this plan, new, um, just because it is a new application, I do want to run through it, um, just for technicalities, right? Um, so, coming off of Worcester Road to, uh, opposite on the existing driveway, three lots of division, that includes, um, the house lot here, um, as well as the iron lot here, and the Upris storage site here, the hallway. So, we are requesting a list of waivers that we haven't requested before, um, there's about eight of them here, they all really retained in the driveway. Um, as you did plan on leaving the driveway the way it is, um, we have talked to fire department, um, I've met with Dennis and Kurt in a meeting to discuss the plans and go over that, um, Dennis Carlson did go up to that roadway and has said that it's acceptable to him, um, has a couple statements, I believe, and you know that you guys have seen, um, this as far as the surface, so he would just like to see it researched this. Or, and he doesn't approve of any increase in, or he's okay with the condition that it's in currently, or he would like the surface to be brought up to a hammerhead, um, where the drive-by connections are.
And I did receive an email in the kind of competition, and, 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 and.
And, great, review this back, uh, look at that comment, best of the setback as well, so, um, that review letter is coming back on the seventeenth of January, um, and everything here has been acknowledged and added to the sheets for comments. And in the same spot we were at yesterday, but we had to resubmit based on the closing of the hearing last time.
The, the fire department issues are really, uh, in relationship to the battery facility, more so than the subdivision, unfortunately, that occasion.
Yep.
Well, there are, we find it's still required for the driveway, because there's just battery, so it's, so we can build.
While we're looking at this, the subdivision right now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so. And I also provided the board with, just to make life easy, uh, each section of, uh, supervision regulations, every question waivers from, and if highlighted in yellow, it's a, it's a way to go. With the, uh, fortune, uh, both on each way with, they're included. Each, each side.
Yeah.
Obviously, to be private and always remain private, correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah. Any questions from the board?
What's, what's the purpose of breaking this into three lots instead of just to?
Um, Kurt, Kurt, you know, the discussion with Kurt, um, he would like to see the fire on its own parcel, if anything was ever to be done with that, in the picture.
I mean, with, with any improvement that you got here today, there's, it was kind of a stipulation that nothing could go on that.
Correct, they'd have to come back in front of you, correct. Um, but he does call this a principal use, this building, he's calling it a principal use, he wants to keep principal uses separate, okay? Yeah.
The uses, they, as previous, you, curbs, you.
Yeah, originally, we had it.
Looking any new use of that building, requiring to, 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 or.
Our original, um, draft was just to split it into two, uh, or, talking with Kurt earlier on, um, we split it into the three. All right, any questions from the board?
All right, one more question.
Um, so the surfacing of the driveway, um, same surface, it's still, you doing asphalt or?
Well, my discussion with, uh, Dennis was a, like a typical T base that we do on the solar field, so it's a plowable surface, but, um, so plowable, maintainable surface. Uh, that was our discussion when he and I met with Kurt in his office, um, so, that was what we was implementing and putting down on the driveway. Right now, it's like a real loose gravel, kind of muddy mess, almost, um, this would be a nice six-inch base on the driveway with, uh, what they call a T base. It's like a half inch minus, um, it's compactable, you can roll it, you can make it a nice surface. Got to meet this back. So far as the action spec that.
As far as the action spec that pop of the T base.
Uh, the T base.
I look this way, but the, since it's, uh, fifteen percent, well, yeah, up and down, not writing it up.
Yeah, so that would be per Dennis requirement, I guess, right, okay, so, I guess that would really come down to his decision. Given the points, require points, and, and, and that.
Yeah.
All right.
John, you have anything?
I know. I know. I know. And, um, I was the fire chief, if I'm, to make any stones, throw stones, that it was, yeah, qualified to make a judgment on what a road should.
Are you asking me?
Yeah. Is that? So that should be, uh.
Is that what, just kind of open up a can of worms.
Correct.
For everything down the road.
Yeah.
Well, he said, the dog catcher said it was okay.
Yeah.
I see.
It's, I think that's why I asked the question.
I understand, so, that's, that's all I answered.
Yeah.
If I could, so, our discussions really around this, the roadway, um, has been to maintain the existing roadway that's there, and not improve, which comes in with the list of waivers, um, the fire department has said that they are okay with the grade based upon how elongated it really is, um, and their ability, and their ability for their trucks to get in and out, um, I guess that's the only opinion really that I can offer, um, as far as building it to a, a road standard, um, then we'd be looking at, not a private way, we'd be looking to eventually make that a common way, more things different, I guess, right?
Yeah, I guess with the material that we're, that John, part of, that I asked about, how much work is going to stand out?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, by, because that means mass deal, it's back for compassion for, like, I'm just talking gravel, I'm not talking asphalt, and, whether, just like, would they, like, take Amazon, for instance, or even any site plan you do, and you're gonna, you know, hey, you're gonna provide the mass DOT compassion spec about, our engineer saying, hey, meets compassion spec, it's what we use, and then you go, you wipe your hands of it, rather than, what John's, like, saying is, just to cover, everyone said, and not open a can of worms, they're required that, as opposed to just going by what a, a department had said.
I see what you're saying.
Just, it just, it holds up, because we don't want to, just to say, if the department had said, yeah, I want this down for material, get ready to go down there, and they get stuck, and they can't get out, and you got someone in the back of the ambulance, and you just, you throw your hands up, you know, just more about safety.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that's.
Just a big guy, need to service the stuff, for them to service the boxes if something happens, we want to be able to get in and out.
Yeah, that's why we try to use the material that we use on the fields, but, all right.
Anything else from the board?
I still feel that it's pretty dangerous there on the other side of that road, without any guardrail, one of that, over, and anybody could drive off the edge of that, or it's not gonna be, if there's emergency, there's the timber guide rail on where the, the narrowest point of the access road, and where the, the, the steepest part, it's very steep on either side of it.
At sixty feet right now?
Yeah, I, I just, no, I mean, that's, that's the easement, that's the easement, the road is, that's.
Road's about fifteen, eighteen.
Yeah. Very, very short, then going down to like a.
All right.
Rock, yeah, it's at some place, places, six feet, someplace, ten feet, so, unto water across, and it's just, I understand the loggers have been going in and out there all day, and that's, that was different, that would be different, we said that, this is now, it opens up on, uh, a spike that needs to be monitored by people unfamiliar with that property, that, that, there's a battery outage, or there's an outage, or some workers need to get down there to, to address any situations with batteries, they're, they're from, not from Charlton, they've never driven that vehicle before, could be a bad storm, could be icy when that happened, and then, and they'll drive down that road, and they, without any guardrail, or any, any minimal improvement to that, I think there could be trouble, so, that's my point, and I, I didn't mean to know anything at the, the sire department, I'm sure he's popping, and his people will be, and we get down there, and that's, that's fine, but, that's my point.
The, the planning board will actually have a second bite at the apple, the separation is, the battery storage facility, has a special requirement, where the board has the authority for any conditions, I mean, even if they say decide to build a single family home there, the true cause of special permit, this is a common driveway, so, no matter what they do on that vacant parcel, where the board's gonna have a second bite at the apple, to re, to require that driveway to be revised, they feel it should be done.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear from those two, on, on why he thinks that it's okay, and, and even under, you know, less than ideal conditions in the winter, how he's gonna get his equipment in, or, or, or if he really feels it's okay.
I can request you to come to, we, you know, or.
More information.
Yeah.
Guide more information, why you can say, why you're adding, you know, should you want to make.
All right, anything else from the board before I open up the phone?
The chair.
Go right ahead, though.
Couple of comments on, you know, right on the cover page of the drawings, the whole subdivision plan is asking for apparently ostensibly eight waivers, uh, but if you actually count through those eight chapters, I mean, it adds up to more than ninety line items of waiver, I understand is not a massive subdivision, but some of the regulations that are being waived, though, like, where is the snow detention systems, you know, where are we going to, if, if this is gonna be, uh, open and maintained, how do salt trucks get up and down that road, where do we push all the snow, does the salt go right into the drainage easement, you know, those things are all covered in the subdivision, where you're asking a waiver, so, it's, it's not only safety, it's for the, you know, future use of, of that property. I see where you're coming from, and I guess, I guess our aim is, but it's actually like ninety waivers you're actually requesting, um, I guess the, the point of the waivers and the point of not building out the road, and to the all the full specs, is that our use really doesn't increase any traffic to the site, um, we have a vehicle in and out probably once a month, um, so, the increase in the use in the driveway, it's not heavy, um, the surface, the final surface gets done on completion of the project, um, a future project here, um, and, yeah, I mean, and, and it really kind of, all that stuff kind of goes to having other buildings involved with your subdivision, and having designated spots to put snow, this is kind of all blanket, an open area, um, so I guess that kind of, where the mind's at with that, is that it's remaining, uses are remaining the same, anything further that does change comes back in front of you, to then be in that kind of purview, if you were to put buildings all in here, understandably, that you'd want to know where you can put snow, because you need access, you need tire apparatus to be able to turn around, um, so, right now, it's kind of all wide open, um, and then, there's one use, proposed use coming in for here, um, with adequate access and fire lanes around that as well, um, so I guess, well, it really helps, anything with the way that you're thinking about it, but, that's, I think.
In the home, on the common closet now, right?
Uh, he does correct, well, his, he's got a guy that comes, yeah, he does, he has a guy that's closet currently, right now, yeah. Yeah, it's maintained actually pretty well.
All right, I think we've gone much past this one, a little bit.
This one, if anything, it's muddy.
So, anything else from the board? Any other questions? All right, I'd like to open it up to the, uh, public proportion of comment, if you have any question or comment, please, uh, state your name and address. Cory, go right ahead.
I think I have the same concern of John.
Yeah.
Guard rail, you know, the access we're around, and you're going to have snow, um, and you're kind of, whenever someone makes a subdivision, it says it's always gonna stay private, well, then I'd like to see them put it on lead, because if not, you just kick the can down the road, and, next time, you guys, your job's even harder, because you're gonna be back here again, um, so, for mutual aid, from other departments, other towns, they don't know where they're going, um, it's not necessarily just Charlton, and show up the country, and, like, John said, people out of town, um, so you have a lot of safety issues, and future use, so, I know this is just for the subdivision, but, if it should be a use that needs town water, and a lot of the other towns are now mandating town water to, with the, um, battery storage units, so if down the road, we want town water to go down that driveway, we then have to be looking at the safety of the road, which will have water probably going through, so, um, I think we've mentioned it is batteries, not ever being secretive, but.
Yeah, no, not at all.
And then, clarify something that's in your packets, ISO New England is in charge of all the energy in the state, who gets it, they approve, uh, whether the liability projects are added to the grid, and they have a request in from New England Power Company on behalf of zero, for this facility, and they're asking for eight megawatts, so, are they being, they know, I live at five, a lot, so, all of these went in, there's been twenty-nine that went in in July from the same zero point, they know our rules, so, I just think they're being disingenuous and blind by admission, so, if they should go back, it should be five when we come to the town.
It, it is five, I know what ISO New England says, because that application was put in actually in twenty-twenty-one, um, to National Grid, um, so, that application reflects early onset thinking of how big the system size would be before the town, a five.
No, the town by law, when you hire to that.
Uh, no, the, the five megawatt just went in this past, um, this past ATM.
No, you didn't, I was on the board, I'm sorry, it spent five for several years.
Well, in any, in, just in any event, it was submitted to National Grid in a certain way, it doesn't mean that it can be permanent within a town in a certain way.
To let people know, ISO has a lot of information, and there's been some other, it's, it's all.
Um, I was gonna ask, are zero point up to date on all their commission bonds, and the other sites, or? Yeah. Whether it's up to date now, maybe they're, registered.
Um, I've got a public records request, and they weren't, they, they may have a bond, but it's not agreed upon around one hundred thousand megawatts, because of the lawsuit, they sued us over the hundred thousand, if you guys remember, and I worked closely with our town attorney, and sent a huge packet, and they were, got thrown out, so, we should have had a correction of a hundred thousand megawatt then.
All right, we can. Can I turn back to the subdivision?
Yes.
This is what it, subdivision, yeah, correct.
So, being.
But, my question was, if, if this company isn't up to date on, on what they've done before, do we continue to hear projects by them until they get up to date, I mean, it'd be like, if they were behind in their taxes, would we really be going to a site plan right now, if, if there was, as to what's up?
Well, with what you guys know right now, they check their own, their own pot, right? As of right now, this.
We're, we're two different departments, yeah, we know what we have in the planning board, where.
The dollar amounts are wrong, it's the original amount, yeah, it's the, like, the original amount, not the amount that they.
So, this is, not the updated amount that, that required to come down, how do we get that squared away, just before we? I, I understand this is a subdivision.
We can't talk about, I, I don't think we can talk about anything but the subdivision right now, we gotta stick to the subdivision, I think it's something that we can be, talk about as other business.
Okay.
We'll just save for that, you do, I saw, I just want to.
That's true.
Only a country official. All right, Tom, is there any other questions from the, go right ahead, sir?
He goes, like, twenty-five, Richard Drive.
Yeah.
Just taking a quick look at the, just the map in general, uh, is there any impact on the subdivision for, um, missed they trails that run right by there, nearby?
It does, yes, so, uh, I've actually been talking with Colin here a little bit about that, um, and then, we're gonna kind of try and address that in the special permit stuff, and, um, also, we, I talked with the landowner, and, uh, Colin has kind of proposed like a conservation easement through that area, um, so that's something that we've been looking at with the landowner as well, that is very open to.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, Colin, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'll be talking to you, we get to the special permit portion, about the neck here, in terms of connecting all this conservation land along that water quarter, um, that doesn't necessarily impact the subdivision, um, but, um, we'll be back at it.
Okay. All right, any other discussion, whether? And the board, on the subdivision? All right. We have a motion to close the.
Um, I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing, um, just so that we can get in.
Oh, yes, thanks for reminding of that.
Thanks, we want.
Yeah, all right, do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to, uh, February fifty?
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue the meeting, for the, uh, the public hearing, for the definite subdivision, kind of, uh, for the way, there were coming somebody, yeah, on the February from eleven.
Fifteen, fifteen, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing, the GP Barry, LLC, GP Barry, LLC, largely, the finished subdivision plan, on Sturridge Road and Greck Road.
There hasn't been a chance to comment on, in general, okay, but, there is, there's some questions on it, I think, regarding to the revised plan to subdivide a different lot, which may not be a big deal, if you had some credit, there's a comment on it, so, we, we, we see there, we don't take action, we get it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, so, just a, just a touch on that, uh, we did add a property line in here to create a lot upfront, that was just, there were some conversations with Kurt, it was just a, um, addition that makes sense, um, for the parcel, as well as the landowner, um, so we added in, this here kept all of our setbacks good with everything else going on, um, so we just added one more lot out there. Which is currently where, um, Larry does his screening of his loan.
This is the one, you said you put a comment.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, so, um, we had the plans revised, um, the sprint, the, it showed incorrect setback lines around all the properties, um, I think Jeremy added us forty around everything, but the sides are actually thirty-five, so that's been revised and commented back on, um, from Mike, and, um, Grace.
The, the plan we have this week, they were revised, or they still need to be revised?
No, they're, they're, they are revised, the setback lines have been revised, yeah, the ones that I dropped off to you the other day there. So which of these lots have existing, um, businesses or, or uses on the, just building Lot A? Um, so, if we're gonna start up here, yep, Lot A, um, has an existing business, Lot B has an existing business, um, that's a scrapyard, Lot C is an existing solar, Lot D right now, um, it's really kind of a lay down area, um, being used for multiple, to multiple things, dirt lay down, um, Lot E is an existing solar out back, um, and then, Lot E is an existing solar outback, um and then. Um, the newly added lot here um is really where's where he's got a screening going on right now for his loan.
And that's Lot A or oh, we're.
No, Lot A, yeah, yeah, it's kind of misleading points to it. So this this again too is an effort to separate the uses.
Yeah.
And discussions with Kurt and. Utilizing frontage in which we are making here. So the currently right now, there is enough frontage for all this to be going on and more, because I think there's enough for like four or five more uses on this property. But in discussions with Kurt, we're cleaning up the property and making it um more user of a tax minimum, all that stuff, so.
Okay, with all that going on, where's? Where is the ultimate? Area that they're going to have? You know?
Yeah, where is the proposal for?
Yeah.
Oh, for battery future use will be Lot D, correct?
Okay. Now, the front for Lot C and Lot D, is that on Griffin Road?
C.
C and E.
And E, correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that is off of Arden Road. The frontage for the solar field actually comes off of Sullivan.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. If you notice, Gray's comments, he's requesting that the uh. Return on the page.
Here with the chair. Go right ahead, go ahead. What goes on with the storm water?
There currently is no drainage.
There is drainage inside the site, correct, yeah. I don't know how it's all pitched currently for. We're proposing to use the same driveway that I'm here.
Yeah.
So that's all existing um conditions right now. There is drainage up inside the site here. Um, for pretty much everywhere around here, it's all previously permitted and dealt with the DEP extensively on that. Um, I don't, I can't answer your question upfront. I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head.
All right.
A can of worms putting in the road. Drive on to Route twenty, I know they're being used now unless grandfather or whatever, whatever the rule has been in place. If you paved that road.
Cause it's paved and ready all the way up. Yeah, right before you get to where Excel is, right before you get to the lot.
Correct, it is paved into probably like three telephone holes in it. I think it's like sixty or eighty feet in off of the flat.
So, yeah, it's paved all the way up to there, and I know that. Graves had a question around there. Existing asphalt stops.
Yeah, I believe it's actually paved around the corner, so that's there, I believe they have a setback system on the right hand side. When you come in, turn the corner and Excel would be on your left. That part's like gravel from that point up. Um, but I believe it is paved around the corner towards the uh MBI.
Is Lot B, Excel?
Uh, Lot B is Excel, yes.
And C is MBI?
I believe so, can I get a picture with the two over there? I forget what.
If Lot A is.
A is MBI?
Yeah, what we mean um. See, so. No, MBI, one of the tenants up there.
Yeah, they might be in A.
They're in A with them with the Ellen.
Kurt has this nice big chart. He's been a special boy.
There any other questions from the board?
Did you say D's frontage is on Sullivan?
No, D, no.
No, where's?
No, D's frontage is off of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, off of the cul-de-sac. What about F?
F off of the front, uh so, yeah, uh no, off of the cul-de-sac as well. So E, the current solar field, if that's what you're asking, is off Sullivan.
Right, that's this here.
Yeah, I believe there's upwards of two hundred fifty feet. Yeah, it's a pretty good distance. To be clear, their frontage is here, but their access easement comes through.
What's it going to be, how many?
For batteries?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at subdivisions tonight.
I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Good, so is Kurt's proposal to build that or? To to pave that cul-de-sac and represent?
Graves asked them to. Yeah, I I know, I mean, there are peer review, John, it's either number uh twenty four.
Twenty four, so.
Yeah.
And I can't re- so is there a turn to that hill to north and able to make that cul-de-sac work? Coming up the hill on the left. You probably got some homes that got on the left hand side there. Look at this space here.
Okay, yeah, okay, the side profile.
No, I'm going, so the left hand side of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, okay, yes, yes, yes.
There's some.
Three to one slope, they call it for one section of it.
So again, with this to um. This is really Kurt's request as a paper. Paper plan, um the plan is to use the existing driveways as they are right now um for access and turnaround, which is. Abundant out there, um there's plenty of room to move and turn around and multiple access points.
Um, to your point Andy, if the things that we could condition it, we'll say. For us to be built. It would never be built the way you represented it.
Or it could on the plan, it would have to stay um with the use of those properties. No, this plan is the only.
I mean, the way I look at it now, I would say, okay, we approved that. I was like, oh, it's gonna be over. No drainage or anything.
Yeah.
We're ready to go.
So since the the word would be, it's to be, to remain private and if any other uses proposed, it has to come back before.
We consider major.
Yeah, modification, trigger, trigger the modification to come back and.
And they, yeah, they give them. Turn around to the satisfaction, the private.
Yeah.
Whatever. And could we add that any change of use or any of the lots in the subdivision would require that?
Well, there is only pretty.
But any changes in any of those lots?
Yeah. Cover the boards and as far as not against. Or any set further confusion.
I know Randy had some language on that.
Yeah.
I believe you, is that correct? Am I speaking wrong? You had, you had looked at some language on how that needs to be worded.
Were more complicated as well, because there's some of the maxes here, some of the maxes from different roads, so.
Yeah.
But still, yeah, we want to make sure that it remains only to the phase. What we hope now. Actually, it was necessary.
All right. Any other questions? All right, anyone from the board, go ahead, Laurie.
Um, I have an aerial code in.
Yes.
I just have a question here. So are you proposing two, someone to pull in Larry's way? This is one lot and this is the second. So.
Correct, yeah.
And.
So these, all the lots involved in the subdivision include all of these eight throughout.
Right. So these two are the only two that are currently vacant.
Uh, correct, so they're. Correct.
Then it was one lot.
Correct.
If you utilize where you can take the use of the, put it on one, like.
So the point of this one here is for his usage screening.
I'm just saying for future use, you intend to put fifteen here, you need three lots. So this is one, this is two, unless you can lease more than the one acre.
Yeah, we we can talk more about.
Too big for that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Based on that.
Yeah.
And and in the subdivision plan, there's only three lots in this subdivision. A. Uh, yes, E and F, I'm sorry, A, E and C are not part of this subdivision, is that correct? Any, they don't have any frontage. Eight, eight. No, they're just, they're just, no, yes, you're correct. Yes. Correct. They were vibing.
All right. Any other questions from the? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion plus public hearing or?
Do you want to continue or close?
Well, we need to, yeah, uh do we need more information from from Fire Department and what are we waiting on?
Well, the only issue is if. We can prove the reason here, but I turn around. Fire department, you know, hammerhead or whatever, I mean.
As far as the fire department look at this, I mean, is there enough room for them to? My conversations with Dennis have been very minimal on this site, um as far as input on to what they have to be done.
In reality, they have.
Yeah, and it's actually set up so you drive like in Sturridge Road and out Griffin Road in some instances. Um, it's kind of like a like you through all of those properties.
So I don't know, in this particular case, if that's actually necessary. The only thing that they know they have to do is just to mentally show proper threat setback for the new parcel.
You're also requesting the same battery waiver or something.
The same waiver requests, correct?
Yes.
How many different owners are there?
One owner.
All of the lots?
Correct, okay.
I'm just wondering if we're missing an opportunity to fix any drainage issues that are over there now. So if there's some drainage issues going on to twenty from here, we could address it now, and now's another only chance that we have to do that.
If I may, I believe he has done a fully permitted drainage system for that whole access and everything. After some years back, I believe that was addressed. Um, he has existing drainage interior to the hump like this is kind of planes up. There's going into the property more, um I don't, I can't speak to what's out front though, um but I know that that's been a. Permanent project already of getting in there. But we don't have anything on the plan?
No, I'm gonna continue with.
The car is just a driver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you have a wide paved driveway.
Yep, but but if it's if there's a problem with it now or a potential issue with it now, we've got a lot to do to get that.
No, I know. Um, I think there was a problem, I think going run off and then twice, and your team are running all over the property owner.
Fifty road, which problem that was actually the result of another problem, not. Isn't it?
If you want, listen, if you wanna, we wanna have Graves take a look at it, or just have it confirmed. It's the division, you know, issue.
Only good for the rest of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel comfortable having Graves take a peek.
All right.
Make sure we we've got everything in mind.
Okay, no problem. All right, doing motion to continue the public hearing to February fifth.
Um, is that gonna give Graves enough time to look at it? Yeah. Take a motion to uh. We need a public hearing for the limited subdivision plan and Griffin Road, so the road to.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi. Right, and so the potential in the D P Barry, I'm coming else in, so confirm I have, because you can try to screen and restore it to some. It's in the Larry's Way, Sturridge Road, Griffin Road.
The special permit application.
Okay.
Did you want to continue that? February fifteenth of March, so the special permit application.
Let's, I'm just fifteenth, I think you should be okay. I think we should be okay if we do the subdivisions first.
Okay.
In your schedule.
Yep, all right, you have a motion to continue the um. Public hearing for the special permit at Larry's Way to uh February fifteen.
Um, so move.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi, all right, next up is continue public hearings to rescind CP Barry, upcoming income way, definitive subdivision plan off of Sturridge Road.
You later, you're pushing the app in because of. The LNG product down there is kind of in their way to be able to do their own work and preparation, their plans and everything. At this time, just rescinding the applications, you know, the pressure is so, they're gonna come back and go to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's blocking on.
We have a motion to through. Accept the letter of rescinding this application.
Make a motion to accept the letter of decision for the income way zero point development budget.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi, like.
Hi, all right, thank you, Tom. All right, next up, we have a uh town developer LLC two forty one Sturridge Road, late plans, special apartment, eight hundred extension request. All right, next up, we have the uh, town developer LLC two forty one survey group, they claim discussion permit eight extension request. July fourteen, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, that is one of the.
Yeah.
This is more for. And. They go, who say that, so. They keep pressing one year. July four, this is. And twenty three to July fourteen, nine thousand twenty four.
Make a motion.
Say.
Make a motion to extend the uh special permit annual extension for Charlton Developer LLC at two forty one until July fourteen, twenty twenty four. Site plan and special permit extension.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Haley Pauzola with Charlton Developer. Um, if if we could, I'm not sure how these are, these extensions are typically done, but could we have the extension drafted on Town Letterhead um, in a format that would be recordable for us?
Yes, you asked me, I always send out an extension approval, you know, until X date on cleaning board letterhead. You need something on paper, right?
Yeah, that's that's that works great. Then then we can just take it to the registry and have it put on title um, and record it. That would be great.
Okay, yeah, I said you, I do give you a hard copy so that you'll be able to you know, enter it for it, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Go ahead. What what are we doing with the? Well, can we decide how long do we continue this thing to record actually, but didn't set up date on that.
First time we said anything over ten years we want to look at again. It makes sense what I said, but this is.
Misdirection.
Yeah, this is pretty fresh.
Okay, actually, we missed something here, right? Didn't rescinded there were, um, sorry.
Going back?
Back, we rescinded the, we have to do both of them. There's two.
All right.
Or subdivision and special permit, the separate applications.
We'll come on. We'll get it. Yeah.
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah.
It has to be second voted for the extension for Charlton.
Yes. Second.
All right, okay. Oh, there we. All right, all right, all right.
All right, come come back, um, do we have a motion to rescind the Z P battery involving company um, subdivision, right? As well.
I thought we did both, we needed to do both. Second up, but then there's another one for this other problem. Are these two different?
No.
What's the subdivision, what's the special? One's there, thank you, yeah. Let's say that we uh we had a motion to rescind both the special permit.
All right, next up, we have oldest land management LLC under Sturbridge Road. They have an ASB sign.
Yeah, all it is, they have a plan they complete the projects, they should be signed or be filed.
Are they open yet or do they get the levels or?
It means doesn't have a CEO that have a real team, I think he was ready to go.
I don't think he's gonna take the movie office, people doing the ones.
Yeah.
Shut the computers down for a day or so and.
Yeah, he said he could do it.
This is, this is, okay, this is.
Yeah, this is this new oil.
Okay. I was thinking it was the.
Got jumped. We don't need to vote on the end, we just need to sign it, right?
It's music.
Okay, all right. And we don't have any minutes.
Yeah.
We we said that was not gonna be there, so we have just done it too many.
Yeah.
But um, the same way they found out it was not gonna be in there, it's the same way that it was also announced.
Okay, two six.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the cleaning board meeting minutes for January fourth.
I'll second that.
All those in favor.
Hi.
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 Hi. Right, and then just to give you a update, I went to the government study meeting and just asked what was going on and change anything as far as the government and then um about how early our turnover has been, you had people just designer leave, I said, no. I did ask them like, where have you found that has it been with boards that are pointed where you have people leaving, like, yeah, like. All right, how do you problem? Because you don't realize the commitment, you won't. So when you get elected, you kind of realize the commitment, you get the signatures, you gotta do it, you gotta do the signs. So.
So.
Oh, yeah. So getting back to something that came up during one of the public hearings as far as any applicant has outstanding fees.
Yes, so what do we do in that case and how do we resolve that? Um, you know, if we don't have the authority to enforce the regulations that we put in place, how do we deal with that?
Well, that's that's a question I'm gonna go, I think they would go back to the attorney and ask him, but they got a a hearing, you know, the town won the case and they're supposed to do it. The attorney should be notifying them, you know, show us some money, you know, advise you.
He's a disis on the property and and.
Or, and that's the question, do do we have to listen to applications from them and we have outstanding issues, issues like that, just like tax.
That's happening. If it was still property, if there was still taxes over on that property.
Right.
We wouldn't even be having a hearing about it, sorry, I mean, we're we're kind of wasting our time with this company if they're not gonna follow the the rules that they've set in place and.
Right.
You know, I don't know who owns that now, how it's pushed out or who's supposed to pay, but uh, it's it's something that we need to.
It's same same company, but they have so many.
So that's.
It's all the same company.
At that point, it's a discretionary special permit and and you know, if they had broken the rules on on previous ones, it's under our discretion to say, no, we will not work with you, you don't. Yeah.
And they have to do the same type of decommission bond, I don't know, but if you don't so, so it, it can't be. So I'm gonna do it to the solar, how do we trust that they're gonna do it bad, right?
And the special permit would be the only place we could get or pay that could just.
I need to put that on, and the applicant needs to be good standard of the town financial obligations.
Now, we have our own bonds. Right.
The decommission bonds.
That's.
Well, we've the the construction bonds.
Right.
And the.
But now for the. Yeah, I guess that's one of the, it's the decommission, they have to close the bond for that, right?
Yeah.
So we won the case, so does that, does that mean that they have to have a bond for the higher amount? I don't think.
Right.
And I think it's one of these where one department does one and the other department does, because doesn't the sisters do the decommissioning bond or is that through us?
Um, yeah, that's for the trial.
Right, and I don't think they realize what goes on.
I would say that man's in development, so he's in a different island of that company than.
So we have to build the bridge over the gentleman's.
If I could, um the track record of this company is kind of crazy, we listen to other towns. They they have solid fields that have been energized and it's not even knocking these requirements. This industry was so supported by the government, they got so much money and it just, as you know, everything got rubber stamped in all of this state. Um, so here we have, they know they needed to do the bond, they know the amount was a hundred thousand megawatt, which I can find will be some of the. We were the lowest in the area, Westbrook Field and Warren are, it's like three hundred and fifty thousand megawatt. Um, so they go after the low one, that way, all of a sudden, they just refer to our case and it shuts up everybody else, but I was on the call for that case and they really lost because of the technical.
Lost is a loss.
Um, so what that does is they sued us that it was because it wasn't the Dover Act that we were unreasonably regulated, but because the state doesn't get involved in bonds, it's more health, safety, financial welfare. That's where we have some power, so if they continuously, you know, I know we signed things saying, yes, the site plan's been approved. When contingent upon receivable, receiving the decommissioning one, but I'd like it to go one step further, have occurred if they don't post the decommissioning bond upfront or twenty five percent of the total in cash, that's supposed to follow the law, which would prevent things from falling through the cracks, because it would be an interest-bearing account. If we wouldn't be sitting here because they couldn't start construction without that one, whereas you be you know, the board approved it and you in good faith, okay, they're gonna do it and they're told, they didn't like the amount, they put that low amount and it they know, they know everyone is busy and that there's so many of these that they'll fall through the cracks, but it's up to us to protect down the road. Um, and then I recently sent Randy um, the packet that actually three other towns are now using. The National Renewable Energy Lab, which is an industry lab, it's all solar people renewable, everyone, it's not any tree hunters or you know, solar people. Um, and they were charged with this by the UPA, their decommissioning bond, it's a package. And if you take out the salvage, right now, it's like three hundred and some per megawatt, but if you take out the salvage, which is too much for us to track, but everything's a commodity. And we wrote in our town bylaws that they couldn't do the salvage, because why do we need to get other weeds? It's it's like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a megawatt, so if they buy a hundred thousand megawatt, when you have proof that the industry is, we're finally catching up to what's in them and like I said, waste management, you have to have a TCL test before, now there's actually two tests, so we're just protecting financially and they have twenty nine of these battery projects that are listed under ISO that they submitted in July last year. Um, they paid Paul Kudjowski, the former state rep from Webster, he's their lobbyist. Pays three hundred thousand a year to to do what I did in the state house a couple months back to to ask for help, so I just think you have to know who you're you're dealing with on a regular basis and and not let them walk on you. This is the only thing we can do is protect that it's gonna get cleaned up when new electronics come down and take its place, so one story longer, that's why I put the packet together and we're all down the third end of that soup. Yeah, it's the landowners, we never made them to watch, which are laws, and the thought was the town could do a name on their property. But what value is that acre with, you know, eighteen thousand solar panels that have hazardous waste of the glass? Yes, you can take the frame, but there's lead soldering too, and we're hearing more about PIPAs that are coming off the panels, you'll hear more about that in the next year. Because it's a coating, so the snow slides off and as we know, all over. Forever, so what we leave our kids, I mean, my kids are grown, but if I had a little kid that had a problem, would be all of us. Yes. Anyway. That's right.
Thank you.
It's for.
All right, Richard, thank you very much.
As far as that goes.
Yeah.
But this nuclear. And no hazard placed.
I own nuclear, and I have to um, write the motion and my laws with the penal regulations, so we'll get everybody a copy of the, okay, electronic copy of the new ban.
Yeah.
The motion to have that public hearing on March fifteen.
All right.
Could you do thirty days, so I'll make it very straightforward, I was going through the bylaws today and with the amendments. Yeah, and it's based on what the state is telling us what to do, so it's not.
Yeah, it's the other because. So all that I was distributed, so it's like they will. This is great, I don't want to. Learn what not to do. People. All right, anyone have anything else? Anything come up? Second.
Second.
All of them favor.
Hi.
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 Need to sign.
Yeah, we got to sign that one.
Informed about what we have.